All right, we're talking with Todd Neville, who is a candidate for the City Commission, seat four. Thanks for coming in. And we ask every candidate, Todd, if you don't mind, just tell us a little bit about who you are, your family, your background, and why you're sitting in that chair today.
Okay, I'm Todd Neville. My family moved here about 24 years ago, in 1990. My dad got a job here. He relocated our whole family here. My parents are still here in town. They had a little stint where they moved to Memphis, but missed St. Augustine, wanted to come back. I finished up high school here, went away to college, to Indiana University, but I would come back every summer and spend my summers here in St. Augustine. And one of my summer jobs happened to be an internship with a CPA firm. And one of the stories I'd like to tell about that is, my now partner, one of my two partners now, I went to his 40th birthday party as an intern. And here I am, a partner of his, and he was at my 40th birthday party just this past year. So it's amazing what 18 years of working together will do. So we have a local CPA firm here in town. I went away to Chicago for two years, worked with a big accounting firm up there, came back to St. Augustine in 1999, have been with this accounting firm or some iteration of it since then. We service three main industry groups. We service closely-held small businesses, we service nonprofits and homeowners associations. Those are the main groups, with some concentration in physician groups and doctors. Other than that, when I came back in 1999, I jumped right into community service. My resume goes across the community. The first thing I did was get involved with the local running club. I was elected president, served six years as president of Ancient City Road Runners. That turned into serving on the Visitors and Convention Bureau for the county for four years, went on to be president of the Rotary Club, went on to, I'm currently on the Board of Trustees at the hospital, have been for seven or eight years. So it's a long, long list of community service that really covers the entire expanse of what the city of St. Augustine is. And it's given me a look into what different parts of the community has, like nothing else could. And it's really, it leads right into Jim's question of why I'm here. Last summer, my wife and I were talking about, we have a two-and-a-half-year-old. At the time, it was about, a little over a year ago, so he was about one-and-a-half. And I was spending a lot of time on different boards of directors. At the time, I was on a bank board of directors, which I've subsequently resigned from to do this. And my wife said, you know, you're spending all this time, are we having as much impact as we possibly can on this community? And when we really started looking at it, we said, you know, there's a way to have more impact, to really affect the community in a better way. And the answer to that was to run for City Commission. And about two months later is when I announced. I announced early. I announced in September. There were some strategic reasons for doing that. We really didn't actually launch our campaign until Janu-, we segmented our campaign where we were from September to January was our passive campaign. We would listen to people, but we weren't reaching out to people. January and February, we did our money raise. And then March through June, we did meet and greets. And then from June until the day of, we did our door-to-door. And here we are now, after a victory in the primary. We were very pleased by that. It's really launched our momentum. We could see a nice crescendo during the primary. Just the difference between June 15th and July 15th, and then even August 15th, the buzz in the community just got better and better each time. And it was definitely exponential and not linear. And it's even more so now that we had the win in the primary. So does that answer the question?
It does. Here's my first question for you. You're a CPA. What's wrong with the city budget and what's right with the city budget?
The biggest thing, the number-one item that's wrong with the city budget is not so much the budget itself, as much as how we use it as governance for the city. I spoke of the experience I've had on different boards, and you have something like the running club that might have a $30,000 to $40,000 budget to something as big as the hospital, which has hundreds of millions of dollars, which is bigger than the city. And you see a consistent trend, no matter what the size of the organization is. And that trend is, we look at our financials on a monthly basis. And we make our decisions based on how things fit within the financials as a whole. When you look at how the city is making its decisions, they are looking at their financial statements twice a year. They look at it right now at budget time, and then they look at it in February when they approve the audit. Other than that, they rely on management. And I've said it several times at different forums when I interview with people, this is not an indictment of the current City Commission. This is people gravitate toward what they're comfortable asking. And we don't have someone who has a financial background on the board right now. So we don't have someone that is interested in asking that next question on the financials, so we rely on management. That's fine. When you have a strong financial management team in place, the city's well-run. But to me, your board has to elevate that to meet its fiduciary responsibility. And we've got to look at that on a monthly basis. And it's something as simple as, guys, we need to see budget actual. Let's talk about it. Okay, if we're going to invest $400,000 that's not on the budget, we need to see how does it fit in? How does it affect our cash on hand? How does it affect our bond ratings? How does it affect our cash burn the rest of the year? And those things are not being asked right now. And it's just because of the nature. People ask what they're comfortable with. And we have two architects, two lawyers, and a preservationist right now. No one's going to ask that question.
What's right with it?
What's right with it? I think what's right with it is, when you look at the city staff, I think they do a good job of managing the day-to-day stuff. I think that when they're asked to provide reports, they provide them. They're responsive with it. I think that there are a few areas that we could do a little better on when you look at the financial statements. The budget process, it's funny, because you look a year ago versus the budget process we just went through, and they really improved the transparency of what the budget looked like. A year ago, when you went through the different segments of the budget, they would, the presentation to the commissioners and to the public literally said revenues, expenditures. Revenues, expenditures. With no breakout of salaries, repairs and maintenance. To me, that is not useful. It's not a useful management tool, and it's not very transparent to the public. They improved that through this budget cycle. You saw a big improvement. I don't know if that was from public pressure, because it's a political year, but I want to see them keep moving in that direction. And I think that it's good that they are moving in that direction right now.
We always ask, or usually ask, what your top three priorities would be if you made a commission. Was that one? Was that the one?
It is one of the three. Early on, we set our platform. We've pretty much stuck to that platform. By walking, one of the things we really wanted to do was make our campaign personal. And how did we do that? We did that by going into the neighborhoods and reaching out to the community and listening to what individual residents had to say. And that part of it helped us hone the specifics of those three or four main points. And those three points are, number one, a city that's focused on core municipal services as its priority. And you'll hear me say "as its priority," and it's very specific in the wording there, because that doesn't mean we're against festivals, or I'm against the 450th, but we have to take care of what a city is meant to take care of first. And that is our infrastructure, it's our fire, it's our police, it's our water, it's the things that, when you think of municipality, that you think of. Number two is a customer service-driven city. This came out of listening to residents, listening to business owners, listening to stakeholders. And there was a general sense of frustration about if you call the city and you get out-of-office replies, or voicemails, or things like that, or going through a permitting process, and you'll get a permit, and three days later, you'll find out the office right next door, you also needed a permit from that office, and no one had told them, go right next door. Just little things like that, from a customer service perspective, is important. And then the third piece is the financially-driven decisions and transparency. And we already talked about that a little bit.
So you mentioned the 450th. If you were sitting on the commission when they voted to approve the $938,000 for the party, what would you have to move ahead?
You know, and this is not meant to dodge that question. This is an honest answer. One of the things I do, and this is me being somewhat of a nerd, is if you've ever watched a Supreme Court justice hearing, if you watch John Roberts, I think it's remarkable to watch how he maneuvered through that. And one of the things that he talked about is to make a decision when you haven't heard all of the facts. I did not sit in on all the meetings. I did not hear every piece of information that was put in front of me. I didn't go through all the reports. So I would hate to give an opinion on something where I wasn't completely informed on. Now, my general sense, if you were to ask me, I would have liked to see it reduced. When we spent $100,000 on roads, and I knocked on about 1,800, I shouldn't say "on about." I know I knocked on 1,803 doors during the primary. We have a software that aggregates all the comments and things, and 51% of the people I talked to said roads were their number-one issue. When you hear something like that, and we only spent $100,000 on roads last year, which is about half of our depreciation for roads, we are underspending on roads. And for me, we're missing the piece of aligning our priorities with what residents want. And our budget needs to be a reflection of that. And to turn around and spend nearly a million dollars on the 450th, when we haven't met this other obligation that is a higher priority, I think is, again, I'll use that word, fiduciary responsibility, I think we're missing the boat there. And to talk about the depreciation, I'll get a little, again, a little CPA nerdy here. Generally speaking, in down economic times, you want to spend one times depreciation just to maintain a fixed asset. During good economic times, you want to be in one-and-a-half to two times depreciation. And considering we're in the $150,000 range for the amount that we're depreciating our roads, $100,000 investment is not going to maintain the quality of roads that we have currently.
So let me ask you another question. How would you have voted and would you have supported raising the rate of the parking garage from 10 to 12, and then that $2 going for the 450th?
My initial instinct is, we need to tighten the belt first. And I've told a lot of people this, when they ask me, are you going to lower or raise taxes? And I say, you know, I want to spend two years really digging into the budget and working with management and working with staff on where the holes are, where the excess spending is right now. So before we do any increases in fees, any increases in taxes, I think we need to do that first. I like, as far as how the Park Now card went, I like that they kept it away from locals, so locals still can use the parking garage for $3. So that part of it, I do agree with.
When you mentioned the infrastructure needs that the city has that we're not filling, and you said roads, and you said police, and you said fire, do you have problems with the police department or the fire department?
Well, you know, one of the things, from walking neighborhoods, I've actually knocked on some police officers' doors. I've talked to police officers at festivals, and one of the things you hear is that too many of the police officers have, are required to work overtime because of the festivals and the weekend. And we're not a normal city of 14,000. We have needs that are greater than that of a city of 14,000 people. And they'll tell you, they say, you know, we love the overtime, but, you know, I like a weekend off once in a while. So to me, that tells me we're understaffed. So I think we need to align our priorities a little better and increase that budget so we can get one or two more officers in there to relieve them of that.
And then fire?
You know, the fire department, I've talked to a couple of the guys over there, and they seem to be pretty satisfied. They haven't mentioned at all that they feel understaffed. The one area where they're a bit concerned is, they have not kept pace with their normal step program. They have a specific step program based on seniority that they get an increase in pay. During the economic downturn, they put a freeze on that. And one of the big concerns that when you talk to the fire department and the individual members over there, is they have new firemen that are coming in that are making the same as somebody that's been there for three or four years, because this three or four, that member that's been there three or four years didn't get to go through the step program. So I think that, just from an employee morale standpoint, I think that on the fire department, it's not about being understaffed as much as about bringing them back into line with the normal pay scale.
Back to the streets for one quick second. Do you have any idea when the last time the streets were assessed?
As far as what needs to be fixed?
What the needs are, what the five-year plan is?
You know, they just did the infrastructure plan, the $83 million. I know that they outlined the monetary budget. I don't know if they actually went and assessed the streets on that. But being a numbers guy and a CPA, I end up looking at that side of the equation. So that's more of what I've looked at than actually to see when they assess the streets and to figure out how they determined what the priority of that $83 million was. But I mean, that's like a normal government spend, though. They allocate the $83 million, but they haven't appropriated it yet. And we'll figure that out over the next two to five years, about how that $83 million is appropriated and when the money is actually dispersed.
And that was a capital plan?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because our city budget's $56 million, and the capital plan is separate from that.
Okay.
There's been a lot of talk recently, of course, you know, to try and redo, Riberia's been repaid, of course, and there was plans, or hopeful plans, to put the children's museum and the aquarium back there. That's not gone through, of course, but now the Marina site there, it looks like it's going to, it's been purchased, and somebody's going to do something. Do you know much about the development, plans of that Lincolnville slash area? And how do you feel about the development of that part of our city?
Well, one of the big concerns, I mean, this, early in the campaign, the keep Riberia green was a huge issue. And now the city's actually been proactive, and Cash McVeigh over in Lincolnville really spearheaded that. And I think it was a good thing that he got done, because when you look at that piece of property at the far end there, you have to go, you have to look at a few things. One, it's not a property rights issue like you have in other parts of the city, because the city already owns that property. So since we, as the city, already own that, we have to look at, what do the residents that are adjacent to the property want? How does it impact the neighborhood and the infrastructure there? And then what's the long-term impact going to be? And when you look at Riberia and King Street, that Riberia-King Street intersection is already clogged to the hilt. To then go and put a facility like that on the end probably would not have been the best idea. I think one of the great things about that San Sebastian project is they're talking about putting parking there. And one of the things that we've talked about throughout the whole campaign is capturing people before they get into the court. Because parking is an issue, but to me, it's a secondary issue to congestion. And the San Sebastian is going to help that, because they're going to capture people and park them there, and then they're going to be walking from there, they're going to be taking other means of transportation into the city. And the San Sebastian's great because of that specific thing, so I'm real pleased with it. And when you look down, my office is in North City until tomorrow. We're actually moving our office from North City to the island tomorrow. When you go down to St. Mark's right now as I'm driving to my office, you'll see the type of project that that developer can do, and it's the New Doubletree. It's the same owner, and that building is a huge, huge improvement over what was there before. So I can only hope that good things are going to come of that, and I think good things will come of that project, because obviously those guys want something that looks good for our community.
Can I touch back on the Riberia point? There are some people who think that it was a mistake to make to do the green. I mean, there was value to that property. I mean, the city has a million in it. I know some people say nothing can be built on it, but nothing that I've seen supports that at all. There's certain things, maybe an aquarium is not the best thing to build on it, but it's certainly valuable piece of property. And all that money, let's just say that it sold for $2 million.
Yeah.
And it had a business on it with 200 employees who would make one trip a day up and down Riberia, which wouldn't overstress that or anything else. But the tax implications of it, and all that going back into the CRA for that community seemed like it would have been a huge thing. So was there at least some sort of trade-off? Was it?
Well, Jim, of course, there's always a trade-off. There's opportunity cost to everything. But the thing that we have there is, we were in a really unique position, because it's rare that we have that type of green space. You see just small things, the uproar, when years ago, we bought the car wash on the corner of King Street and US1. The backlash for the city going and purchasing a property like that was pretty severe. So for us to have a piece of property already, for us to hear the residents of Lincolnville and the rest of the city say, hey, let's keep that green, I think that we had a really unique opportunity there to do the right thing versus just cash in on it. And I mean, I think that we listened to the residents, and that's a good thing. Because usually, what we end up doing is, we end up being in a property rights fight. And this was a unique situation where we didn't have to go down that path.
What about the 7-Eleven?
That's a whole different story.
Okay.
And you have two different issues on 7-Eleven. The number-one and the biggest issue to me is, you've got an intersection that is failing. It doesn't matter if it's 7-Eleven, it doesn't matter if it's Starbucks, because there was talk about Starbucks. If you guys remember, I mean, the old property that was there, you had Manatee Cafe in there, you had a couple of little retail shops. Even that caused extra congestion. And it's not because of the business that's there, it's because of the intersection. And luckily, NFTPO and DOT have already done the study, they're already starting to allocate the funds to fix that intersection. So I want to see the city to really push and work with DOT on fixing that intersection. And whatever comes of it in the courts will be better off either way.
Is there a fix for that intersection?
I'm not a traffic engineer, but it can't be any worse than it is.
Yeah, I think they have to take away the carousel. You're talking about the property rights fights. The big thing, I guess, the hot issue now is the property rights thing that's going on in Davis Shores with the commercial stuff. And that causes, I think, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but that is private property owners, where they want, where the neighborhood wants them to take away, in essence, take away their right to commercial stuff. How do you see that playing out? And where do you stand?
Okay, how do I see it playing out? I can't speak. I mean, that's just conjecture. How, the responses that we can make to address it are something I can talk about. Just a little anecdote, I'm closing tomorrow on a piece of property about two blocks from there. My wife and I are buying a lot, and we're going to build a house and move there. But that tells you that I'm pretty confident of where this is going. Tom Dreisbeck, who's the president of the Sands, which is St. Augustine-North-Davis Shores Association, he sent a pretty good letter to the City Commission and to city management. And I think it was a really good approach from the perspective of, what are our options? Versus immediate, okay, let's take away the person's rights. We need to sit down and learn what the options are. And Tom did a good thing by reaching out to Isabel, the city attorney, and saying, what options does the city have? And then the second thing, by reaching out, he can also reach out to the business owner and discuss about, okay, how do we make this work if you do decide to move forward with that? And that's the type of thing that I think we need to do. We need to be more proactive in reaching out to businesses when there is pushback from the community. And then the other piece is, we need to rely and request that Planning and Zoning is a more proactive board than just a regulatory board. Their current role is one to just implement the laws, implement the ordinances that are in place. But we'd be much better served if they could say, hey, X, Y, and Z are issues. Here are things that we keep seeing over and over. Because a lot of the things are not elevated to the City Commission level, and the City Commission needs to know about those things. Planning and zoning, I think we need to rely on them. It's a city board. Again, I go back to my experience on different boards of directors. And you have finance committees, and you have investment committees, and you have compliance committees. And the master board looks to those to give them advice. The same goes for this. We need to look down and talk to the Planning and Zoning and say, hey, what issues are we looking at? And rely on what type of advice they could give us as a commission.
What about Flagler College? That's been a hot button, at least on the mayoral, between the mayoral candidates, are they paying their fair share based on the space that they occupy? Do you have an opinion on that, one way or the other? Would you like to see more money or less money, or about the same?
Well, I, right now, again, I'll go back to what I was talking about before, is, generally speaking, I'm not in favor of increasing taxes. And I think that's just a general sense of what I'm looking at. As far as Flagler goes, I think there's been a lot of debate back and forth about the payments in lieu of taxes. At first, some people were saying, oh, we just need to tax them. Then it became voluntary. I don't think you're going to get any organization to voluntarily pay taxes. I know you're laughing, but I know I'm not paying taxes voluntarily. And one of the things that I think you have to look at is the impact that an organization has on the entire community. And you have churches downtown, you have the COA, you have St. John's, the Ark of St. John's, they all have a footprint downtown, and they all provide a service to our community. And when you, a few years back, I don't know if you remember, there was talk at the county commission level about cutting off all payments to nonprofits in this community. And nonprofits are a segment that our firm services a lot, and we perform audits for those nonprofits. And when you see the type, for every dollar that goes into a nonprofit, you might get two or three in matching money, or grants from an outside location. So there's an impact that these nonprofits have beyond just the ad valorem taxes that are not being passed on to them. So I would say, at this point, I wouldn't want to see that happen. I think that the benefit that either Historic Preservation, taking care of the needs of people that can't take care of themselves, you have St. Francis House right downtown. I mean, there are several properties downtown that are servicing our community above and beyond what you would have just from some tax dollars.
So you wouldn't?
I would not.
Okay. But even the payment in lieu, that keeps going around, that that's something?
I'm not in favor of it.
That can be imposed on the college. That's a voluntary?
Yeah, I'm not, well, it depends on how it's structured. I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, okay.
Couple of years ago, it was reported that there was, you know, there's design plans that have been kicked around, and I haven't seen how they're going to, for the bayfront area there, and make it a more walking-friendly area. Have you reviewed any of that?
Yeah, Fred Hallback did a plan, and Jeremy Markowitz did a plan, I want to say it was probably 2008, in that timeframe. And what they had talked about was, they had, I think, one, if I recall... And what they had talked about was, um, they had, I, I think, one, if I recall, I don't have it in front of me, but, uh, along in front of the, the Hilton Bayfront there, um, it was just a, a carriage route and then they had taken, uh, the, the A-one-A traffic and they'd made it single lane. Um, I think there's some benefit to it, uh, that, that you could improve the traffic flow there, uh, but I don't know if, if the community is ready for that drastic of a change. Um, I think that we, and my wife pushes me on this all the time about that we have to think of moving people through the system versus moving cars, um, because we have a historic downtown and that gives us a finite amount of space downtown. And so we can't build super highways through downtown because we don't want to, uh, impede on our historic, uh, properties. Uh, so the next, the next step then is to look multimodal and get people through trolleys, uh, bike ped, uh, just all different sorts of transportation. And if that means doing single lane, uh, I don't know if we're quite there yet. Um, but I, I know that that project that, that they had proposed was a drastic change to downtown.
And so there's no, no change for going forward?
Not, not right now. I don't think right now there is. Um, I, I, I think the, to me, I think Anastasia Boulevard has a, a bigger need, uh, because one of the things, you come over that bridge alliance and you basically go to highway speeds and the, the width of the road goes to the width of a, a four-lane highway when you're still in residential area. Uh, I would see more need there to narrow those roads and, and, and change the footprint of the road from there, maybe to the Alligator Farm, um, versus doing the bayfront right now.
Let's shift over to visioning.
Uh huh.
A couple of questions on that. Number one, do you think the money that we spent on the visioning was adequate or not? And secondly, where do we go from here once we have the plan?
It, it's funny, if you go back and read the article when I first announced, one of the things that inspired me was the visioning process. Um, I've been through several visioning processes, strategic planning, whichever, wherever you, you see this really aligning. And I, I've seen it be extremely beneficial to organizations. Um, but there's two things that you have to have to make it work. The first thing is, uh, you, you've gotta have community buy-in. And the second thing you have to do is, and, and the other organizations, they weren't cities, but you had to have constituent buy-in, you had to have stakeholder buy-in. The second thing is you have to have implementation. Because if it goes on the shelf, it does us no good at all. Um, so I thought it was a really good opportunity for us to, to lay out what are those priorities. Um, to me, at this point, the, the process has stalled. Um, I, I don't think it needed to take this long. I think it could've been compressed significantly. Um, I know public input was very important on it, but we had fifteen members of the community that, that know this community pretty well and who were a pretty good cross-section. Um, now, the, the, the cross-section of the community has been shaken up because some people have resigned, so we, we lost some of the, the minority representation on it. We've lost, uh, I, I think the cross-section has narrowed some, um, which is disappointing. Um, but I think the, the big thing is it was worth, um, going down that path. I would like to see it gain traction again. Um, now, if it can, I don't know. Um, it, it's gonna depend on, on how much they push forward on it. I, I think it could've been done more effectively in a shorter timeframe though.
For the same amount of money or less money?
I, I think for, for the same amount of money, it could've been, been done. I, I mean, they already reduced the budget, the, the original proposal, uh, I mean, it was fifteen thousand, then it bloated up to a hundred and five thousand. I think it's back down to fifty-six now. Is it, is that, well, don't quote me on the fifty.
It's on sixty.
It's sixty. Yeah, it's in that ballpark. So, I mean, they should be able to get it done for that.
When you talk about the, the streets, what, what is your opinion of the High Polystory project right now? Is, is that a good project? Is it a good, is it a good, a good spend?
I, I think it's a good project. I, I don't think it was probably the right time. Um, from a timing perspective, I think we had other infrastructure needs. Um, and I, I, you know, some people say that the public-private partnership is a good thing, um, for the businesses to, to pay up their portion of it. Um, I think it sets a bad precedent, um, to a, a pay-to-play precedent. And I don't think, uh, if someone wants their street in front of their house fixed, there shouldn't be the, the obligation of, well, you know, the downtown business owners, they were willing to, to pay a third of it, now we want you to pay a third of it. Um, we need to have a capital priority plan based on an assessment of all the streets and not targeting specific areas based on who's gonna pay.
Do you think that's the way that worked? It was, it was?
I, I think it, I think it moved up the priority list because of it. I, I absolutely do.
So, so you're not that in favor of these public-private partnerships?
No, I'm not. Because, because I think it sets a bad precedent for moving things up the priority list based on who's gonna pay first. And, um, my tax dollars, I don't live down there. Does that mean my road doesn't get paved just because my neighborhood decides that we don't wanna pay more in taxes? I don't, I mean, when, when you pay in, it is to cover the entire city, not to hit on specific areas that are willing to basically move their things, their, their projects up to priority list.
Do you think it could?
It, it could set a bad precedent.
Yeah.
It absolutely could.
For richer neighborhoods, for more affluent?
Not necessarily.
I mean, if they're gonna cost share, there, we have neighborhoods that can't cost share.
Right, right.
So that would naturally, for what you're saying, push them down to the bottom of the list.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. That is exactly what I'm saying.
Like West Augustine and Lincolnville.
West Augustine and Lincolnville are a great example.
Okay.
What would you do if you were elected to work more with the county? How do you see that relationship?
Um, you know, there, there was a, uh, the city hosted a, a joint county-city, uh, meeting to talk about the utility over in West Augustine. And I came away from that meeting saying, you know, this relationship is great. Um, both Mike Wancheck and John Regan, the, Rachel Bennett, uh, a lot of the other commissioners, uh, seem to be working real well together. I got to go to that meeting, I, I walked away from it thinking that the relationship's very good. I didn't get a go to the meeting that was out at the county. That one I heard did not go so well. Um, and there's this push-pull about the, the sewer line that goes out into West Augustine, about who's gonna pay for what, who's gonna own the, the, the territory, um, after the fact, who's gonna pick up the costs. Um, and I think it's a workable situation. I think when, uh, you let, you, you let the, the management side of it, you let Mike Wancheck and John Regan really sit down and, and work it out and we just give them direction as to whether or not we wanna do it. Um, I, I think it's a, an important project. Um, and I think it's something that, that Mike and John can work out. And it, as far as how I can impact it is through the, the different boards I've been on, through the Rotary Club, um, things like that, I've built relationships with all these people already. Um, so having relationships in place is something that is hugely, hugely vital to sitting on a commission. Because when something comes up, when an issue pops up, I don't need to spend two or three meetings building up trust with people. That trust is already there. I've already worked with them on projects and there's an open door. I mean, I can go pop in on Mike Wancheck, I could go pop in on John Regan, so we could talk about these, these projects, uh, in advance before, uh, something comes up and becomes a, a hot-button issue.
So your leadership style, you talked a little bit about that. You'd be a new board member, how would you, the first ninety days, work to get acclimated and work with your fellow city commissioners?
You know, the first, the first ninety, maybe not even ninety days, I think the first three or four meetings would be a, a, a sit-back-and-listen strategy. Um, when I've gone onto boards, uh, there's always nuances that take place that you, you have to listen first, um, and get a sense for that nuance. To come in, uh, bullheaded and just push, push things through is usually not a good leadership, uh, quality. And the reason being, because this is a four-year term. To try to get everything done in the first two months is probably gonna cost me the last three years of my term. Um, whereas a little slower approach and listening and, um, getting a sense of that nuance on those first three to five meetings, I, I think is a valuable investment.
And, and a lot of city meetings and, or city elections in the past, there were relationships forged before the election. In other words, some, some candidates actually ran together.
Yeah.
Are, are, are you forging any sort of relationship with any sitting or any?
Absolutely not. Uh, we, we said that from day one. Um, it, it's funny, I had, uh, a, a current city commissioner, we, we had two fundraisers, uh, to help fundraise for our campaign. And a, a current city commissioner, uh, reached out to me and said, you know, why didn't you invite me to your fundraiser? Um, and I said, you know, because I don't want to be viewed as being aligned with anybody, either sitting commissioner or anyone running for office. Um, I've been invited to county commission, uh, campaign events, I stay away from them because I need to run on my own. I need to, uh, let people know that I have my own thoughts, I'm not running with anybody else and it, it's, it's extremely important. One of the things, as a CPA, uh, that we're, we're trained, both when we're in school and, yeah, Delinda's a CPA, I know. Uh, we're trained in school and, uh, then even when we're doing our continuing education is independence is a huge, huge part of what we do. And it's independence in appearance and independence in fact. And I'm gonna take that from my profession and apply it to what I do here. Um, and it's really important because when we make decisions, I need to be independent in those decisions and be able to look at, uh, the, the set of circumstances, set of facts that are, are in front of me and apply whatever those facts are on an unbiased nature. And if I'm aligned with someone, it's gonna make, make it that much harder to do that.
Okay. I have one more, one more question. This came up and it's, may not have come up to you, but it sounds like where you're moving to, it's a natural thing.
Yeah.
But when we were speaking with some of the beach candidates, um, one of the things, one of, one of them was, had some good ideas, but she said, you know, there's, there's no way to tell where Saint Augustine stops and Saint Augustine Beach begins. I mean, it's all out on the beach and it's really one thing. And they were talking about, you know, it actually came up, they were talking about this part-time or full-time events coordinator. And, you know, we said, well, we've got this thing, you know, you're on the same, one doesn't end, the other doesn't start, can't, wouldn't it be a good thing to work with the city and maybe run some of the trolleys from over here and you guys do some state and maybe you can co-fund an events planner with, because the city's got some things in place that you don't? Would, would some sort of relationship with the city seem like it, it would have a lot of promise to you between the beach and city?
I, I mean, I, I just read, and I know Michael Cunningham just resigned from that position, so I know exactly where you're going with this. Um, I, I think there are some things, I, the, the path that Andrea Samuels, uh, had, uh, approached the city on, which was the, the trolley system back and forth between the beach and the downtown, I think was a great idea. I really do. And I give credit when, when that kind of fell apart, uh, Dave Chatterton, uh, over at Old Town Trolley, or not Old Town, uh, his, the, the Green Trolleys. Um, they, they stepped up and they basically implemented it themselves. So the private industry stepped up and said, you know what, this is a good idea, we're gonna do this, we're gonna offer it as a free service from the beach to downtown with the hopes that then people would buy one of their, their trolley train tours. Um, so I think that, that project would've been a great one to, to do a joint project with. Um, it's too bad that it fell through. It's good that private industry stepped up and, and filled the need though.
Okay.
The events coordinator though, I, I, I don't think so because the, the, the events themselves are generally isolated. You look at things like Beach Blast Off, um, the farmer's market, uh, down at the beach versus what goes on in the city. I think the events are, are, uh, they're segregated enough that it's not, it's not something that would be a good overlay. I think the, the trolley system back and forth would be though.
But there are other ways that, that?
There, oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
So what didn't we ask you that we should have?
Um, that's, that's actually interesting. Um, the, the, the big thing that I'd like to stress is the, the skillset that I bring. Being a, a CPA, we don't have that on the commission right now. It, it's something, uh, when you look at, years ago, uh, an act at the federal level was put in place called Sarbanes-Oxley. Um, Sarbanes-Oxley, one of the, the stipulations of Sarbanes-Oxley is any board of directors for, uh, a publicly traded company had to have a financial, uh, a financial expert, if you will say, um, on their board of directors. And I, I think when you're looking at a, a city with a, a budget of fifty-six million, um, you need to have that same sort of expertise on its board. We don't have that now. I've talked to several people, you look back, I can't remember the last time that the city has had that. Um, so it's a skillset that no one else that's running, no one that's sitting right now has. And it's something that affects every single decision that we make. It's, it's not, I, I mean, I know planning and zoning is an important thing right now and our, our, uh, property rights are an important thing, but that's one small segment of what we do. Um, the financial impact that our budget and our financial statements have touches everything. It, it doesn't matter what the decision is, it touches it and that's the, the biggest thing that I, that I bring to this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for having me.